Yeah, as soon as Trevor gets here, we'll start. That's why we're waiting on him, so. Yes. They said he was, said he was coming. If you're willing, yeah, just get on up here and bring us some magic or. Yeah. Do we? Oh. Hey, I was there Saturday. I didn't see it. Yeah, I made it, okay.
No, I want to be able to go to sleep tonight.
Hopefully, you'll be here in just a little bit. Okay. I think you should bring the pizza. It's not, yeah, it's all. We're just glad you're here. Okay, sorry for the delay. So now we can get started. I'm glad everyone waited patiently. Um, if we'll start with a walk off beginning to my right.
Thatcher here.
Hallowell, President.
Okay, let's the records reflect that a quorum is present. If we could stand now for the pledge, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll do the invocation first.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another day you've given us and all your blessings that go with it. And we thank you for this opportunity to get together as a community to deliberate on the business of the city. We ask that you give us the knowledge and wisdom we need to make the best decisions for the whole of Winsboro. Christ save us, pray again.
For the allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and the Spirit of the Father, and the Holy Spirit, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now with Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, indivisible.
So at this time, we'll move into the public call minutes. All three of y'all would like to be on eight point one. So, um, I don't see anyone else signed in prior to the meeting being called to order. So we'll just move into the consent items. Um, six point one, the minutes, apple forest financials. Did anyone have a question or anything of that sort? I'll have a chance to look over them.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent items as presented.
Okay, I have a, excuse me, first and second. Any additional discussion? All in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? No motion carries. Okay, so let's go into, um, seven point one, action to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one, A one, amending authorized signatures on bank accounts in the name of the City of Winsboro and the Winsboro Economic Development Corporation. Um, I think this is really just kind of housekeeping on getting the signatures. I think we do this every year. Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve resolution twenty twenty four zero points, uh, A one, amending authorized signers on bank accounts in the name of the City of Winsboro and the Winsboro Economic Development Council.
I'll say it.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? No motion carries. So we'll move on to seven point two, action to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one, ordering the general election, establishing procedures for the election and providing an effective date. This is for the, um, May third, twenty twenty five election. Um, the office is up for reelection as the mayor and two ultimacies, which is currently held by King and Moore.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve resolution two zero two five dash oh one, ordering the May third, twenty twenty five, general election.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any additional discussion needed? Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, seven point three, his action, my voice is going, his action to approve the EDC expenditure. Um, what this was, was a, um, request from the EDC board to do an incentive request for the Rotary Club for the Rotary Park improvements in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. I think everyone was provided a, um, handout if you didn't get a chance. Or if it wasn't uploaded, um, anybody have any questions about this? This is what the EDC has approved to come out of the EDC funding. Anybody have any questions?
So.
Yes.
Just to keep me up to date, the Rotary Park is the park over by the city auditorium?
Yes.
And so what are the improvements for?
Um, they're gonna put a cover over it. And they're gonna, well, and you'll see, you'll hear more on eight point one. Uh, there is people here from the Rotary Park to, this is just approving the, um, EDC board new mulch. I mean, they're, they're basically picnic tables, the concrete. I think the, the biggest thing that I like is the cover over the whole thing because during the summer it's just so hot for the children. So this is for the approval of the twelve nine EDC. Twenty nineteen.
Did y'all get a grant to build the park? Is it okay that I ask them, I guess, since they know their questions? Did y'all get a grant to build the park? How did y'all build the park?
So we went through the, through the funding, um, through our fundraiser and we got a grant from Wood County Electric. And, uh, they were, but they didn't cover that whole thing. We came and we got money from.
The plan was originally whenever we came to the EDC the first time, that was gonna be phase one when we very first built it. They said when you're ready to build the rest, come back and we'll talk.
Yeah. So, hey, uh, seven point three is just to approve the EDC's expenditure. And then we'll go into general discussion on eight point one. And we'll go in more depth. Or would you like them to do it at seven point one?
I just, I just wanna know more about the park. I just, I knew that it was built. I just didn't know what updates were being needed for. So when y'all built the park?
Why don't, why don't? Why don't somebody step forward? I'm sorry, the voice is about gone.
Yeah, I see him.
If you can just state your name, please, and your address.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Heightman. Um, this is Kason Ragsdale and Carly Holland.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go for it.
So this is for Rotary Club. Um, you know, it's a local nonprofit where we work together to make some positive changes in the community. Um, we do a fundraiser every year. Selling people sandwiches. And we do some teacher give backs. Um, we gave almost eight thousand dollars for the Winsboro Disc Park. So we do a lot to give back. In twenty nineteen, we built Rotary Park. And, uh, the EDC helped, uh, Winsboro, excuse me, Wood County Electric, uh, got a grant from them. And, um, that was phase one. So we came back to, uh, the EDC two weeks ago and asked for money for an all-weather cover, basically a large metal cover. And Carly can kinda tell you about why that's needed. Um, but overall, the plan was to do concrete pads, um, benches, add mulch to the park. We just want it to be an all-weather park so you can play in the rain. You can play when it's a hundred and twenty degrees outside, you know, without kids getting burnt. But, um, I don't know if that's what you want to go. So, um, you guys.
We need you to state your name and address. I'm sorry.
Sorry, address?
Your name and address, yeah.
Carly Holland. Whole address, nineteen sixty four. Okay, I was like, County Road forty six sixty. Um, sorry, uh, already kinda heard my spiel, but if you've been to the park in the summertime, it's unbearable. I mean, no one is really there in the middle of the day. There is no shade whatsoever. Um, so a lot of the times, me as a mom with kids, go to other parks, um, spend money in other towns. Breakfast, lunches, whatever, snow cones, all that good stuff that goes with the park day. Um, birthday parties, anything like that. It, there's just nowhere to get out of the weather essentially. Um, so a weather, uh, all-weather cover would, number one, give shade so the park could be utilized in more ways than just when the weather's nice. Um, and number two, just be a site that kids, um, could play safely, have birthday parties, that kinda stuff.
So Kason Ragsdale, uh, five oh three West Broadway. So a little bit about the park. When we built it in twenty nineteen, we went back and looked through the numbers. So it was forty-five thousand is what it cost to put the park together with the fence, park, mulch, everything. So from the EDC meeting, we came in looking for full funding when we did it two weeks ago. And, um, they agreed to do twelve thousand nine hundred on that. Um, so what we've done is we've broken it down into phases to make it a little easier to look at. So, um, phase two would be putting the all-weather cover and then, um, adding mulch. I don't know if we added a picture of what the mulch looks like right now. It's got the tarp flipped up and it's, it's really a safety hazard. So we wanna get that. It just doesn't look good. And then, um, the phase two would finish the, the all-weather cover. But it would also extend out further, which would leave room to add on the concrete picnic tables, anything we're gonna add past that. So the amended number that we're, what we're asking for today is the, uh, is twenty thousand, which would finish the phase two, which is the cover, finishing the cover and it'd be ready to go and then putting mulch out. So, and if we get that and can get started, we will come back and see you for phase three. So.
Yeah, oh, when this came before EDC, if I remember, what, when there a deal where you would pursue other matching also?
Yes.
We also applied, we also applied for, um, a Wood County Electric grant as well. So that is, I think we'll find out in March if we get approved for that.
Sorry, what was your ask on that, the dollar amount?
I think we asked for matching, uh, thirteen?
It was twelve the last time y'all did it, so matching the thirteen that the, the EDC.
Yes. And we're, we wanna, I think we're gonna ask also Wood County EDC to match as well. And then we're gonna sell as many sandwiches as we can until we get the park funded.
So when you, when the Rotary put in the park, did they put any financials in to occur over time? So that was in twenty nineteen that the park was done. Has there been any line items that the Rotary uses to implement back into the park? Or has that just been left up to the city to maintain that park since the twenty nineteen?
Were you talking about like mulch and everything?
Like anything, did, were y'all set to try to raise money since twenty nineteen to now to upkeep the, the park? Or was that just left on the maintenance of the city?
So yes, we've been fundraising money and, and getting it ready to move on to the next phase. We just haven't, with COVID hit and everything, it just kinda, everything got bumped further. So, um.
So today you're asking for thirty-two thousand, which is from the, the third, well, thirty-three thousand, I guess, with the thirteen thousand from the EDC plus twenty thousand from the city today. What had, what did y'all fundraise to match that over the last six years?
So our treasurer is actually not here that has the exact numbers on that. I don't know what he's got it designated for, so I can't, I don't wanna speak out of place.
So y'all have twenty thousand to add to the twenty thousand that this city's gonna match and the thirteen thousand that the EDC is gonna match?
So we don't know, I don't know that number. Cause we, so like I said, the money is, so we do the teacher give backs and we do other things. So I don't know what everything's allotted for, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak out of place and if that money's earmarked.
So I'll just tell you where my holdup is. Is, and we've seen this not just here multiple times since being on council. We have nonprofit organizations, groups that wanna come in and revitalize the downtown or build a park. And then call it good and never continue to put money away in their line item to help upkeep the park. So we don't have a Parks and Rec department here. We did briefly, couldn't really afford it. So now it falls back on our maintenance guys to upkeep these new areas, these new designated parks, these new designated areas that we have. Um, and then for us to continue to upkeep it, not just upkeeping it, but, but revitalizing it in this instance as well. My only thing is if I'm gonna ask for twenty thousand dollars, I'm gonna show up here and say that I've raised fifteen thousand dollars over the last five years. Because to me, that makes it look like you're just gonna ask for money, let us build a park again, slap your name on it when it's twenty thousand dollars. It's the city council's park. It's not the Rotary Club's park at that point.
So I don't know the exact number.
Do you get where I'm coming from though? Like why, why I'm saying and why, like my job is here is to speak for the whole city. I'm, I agree with you. I don't wanna go to a park in the middle of the summer that does not have a shade over it. That's why we're working on getting shades over the baseball stands at the baseball field and all of that. But it's hard for me to wanna say, yes, we'll give you twenty thousand dollars when you've asked for thirty-three thousand dollars. But you can't come and tell me what you've saved over the last five years, six years really, to go back into this park. Which I know isn't an everyday thing that you're like, you're giving to the school and I get that. But if we're gonna give, you've, you've got a line item of what you're saving. You, and I would have hoped you would have built this park with intentions of having your name on it and continuing wanting to put back money into it. So I'm just really hesitant to want to approve the EDC's twelve thousand, thirteen thousand dollars and to give twenty thousand dollars without seeing what y'all brought back to the park other than having your name on the park that the city manages, runs and funds. It's, to me at this point, we need to change the name back to the City, Winsboro City Park, not Rotary Club Park.
So on the original park, we put in a lot of funding from the Rotary Club. I don't know the exact numbers on that for the, from the original park itself, but, um.
So y'all have twenty to match that thirty three?
So it was right, so, okay. I just didn't wanna speak, no, I just didn't wanna speak out of turn cause that's not my.
And then I'm not, I'm not trying to write this apart by any means. I'm just trying to tell you where my thought process is coming in making this decision that I'm not just gonna vote yes for twenty thousand dollars.
I think also, though, we worked, you know, with these organizations to get the funds and then worked together to build the park, to gift to the city.
Yeah.
You're right, we are not making.
But if we're gonna continue adding to it and continue updating it, I, I wanna see that give back. Does that make sense? Like I just?
Yes. And I think also the roof is gonna protect the playground from, you know how it.
I agree.
They kind of rot and over time.
And it's gonna keep the mulch, and the mulch is gonna deteriorate over time. I totally understand all those things, I'm just trying to see what, so.
I had a chance on Saturday, I took my granddaughter out there. She's three. It was eighty degrees, and to me, it was hot. But I mean, that's, that's me, okay, I work inside, and so, some, some people would think it was great, but it was hot. I can see where the equipment has took damage from the sun. The mulch is almost non-existent. I mean, I, I totally saw the black tarping, and, you know, and I think all that was put in, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to help the city to maintain the park with the black tarp, the mulch, the, you know, to keep the grass down, and I think that was the plan for that, if I'm not mistaken, just by the way it looks. I think that's one of the parks, because of the play equipment, or jungle gym, or whatever you would like to call it, I think it's used quite often. There was a lot of children there the day we went on Saturday. So I see that it is being utilized, it's one of the few parks here in Winsboro that I saw is utilized probably on a daily basis. I totally understand what Trevor's saying also, because it does take maintenance to keep anything up. I can see the need for the cover without even thinking twice about it. I mean, I, I was there Saturday, and I do think if you have picnic tables, things of that sort, because there's only two benches there right now, the fence is, is still in good order and stuff, and I do think it would be utilized even more as part of the city, even if it was granted by the Rotary Club, because they have put in funds as well. So I can see, I guess, both sides of it, and honestly, the twenty thousand from the city, that was, that was my number that I threw out there, because I think back in, what was it, twenty nineteen, the city made the, oh, I don't wanna say deal, but, you know, build it and we'll help you continue. The city said that back then. So now we're to phase two. So to, for me to think the city should pull out now, I, I don't think that would be beneficial since this park is used. We have some parks that's not, you never see a person at all. So that's where I stand on this, and, and like I said, you know, the EDC said twelve nine, I, I threw out the number of the twenty thousand for the city, because I think we should contribute, and I do think it, this money will spend, and I think it would bring value to our civic center. I mean, there's a park right there, there's the swimming pool there, I mean.
Can I say also, Carly made the point during the EDC meeting that when she goes to market and she goes and gets food, and, you know, those are, that's money that is going away for, being spent in Winsboro.
It's a day, if I'm gonna work this up, it's a day that you're spending.
That's much better.
How much were you gonna apply for with Wood County EDC and the elec, Wood County Electric?
So the Wood County Electric, we did the thirteen thousand, which was in line with what the EDC did, and the Wood County, or was it Wood County, was the twenty twenty-five funding had closed, so we won't be able to do anything for that. And I wanna mention, so the, the steel is, is ready to get, so we've got the bid and everything ready to go, so when we get to the funding, we're ready to start, you know, break ground and get it going. So, another thing Rotary's done in front of, is it the junior high, the old, old high school? There's Interact Park, which Rotary was a big part in helping with that, and it's called Interact Park, but it's not, nobody associates it with Rotary Club, but that's concrete, trees, and stuff like that, that's just giving back to the community, that's not really necessarily tied to what we do. So nobody sees it.
Well, we're kind of in the same situation that Wood County EDC was in, in that their funding was already closed. This is money that's not in our budget currently, and we have items that are in the budget that we're over budget for, so it's finding the extra twenty or however much. Twelve thousand nine from the EDC is a different issue, because they have, there is money in the EDC fund, and that's why it's on here in two separate deals anyway. I would really personally like to put off the other, the city part of it, you know, separate from the EDC part, until after you've heard back from the grant application and some of the other possibilities to which you can raise elsewhere before you come back, and let's look at it again and discuss it further when our finance director's here.
We, we need to go back to the EDC one and vote on that, and then we'll come back to that one, so let's go ahead and do that. Thank y'all very much for answering.
Okay, so we're on seven point three, action to approve the EDC expenditure of the twelve point nine.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the city council approve the EDC expenditure of twelve thousand nine hundred for the Rotary Park.
I'll say that.
Can I have a first and a second? Is there any additional discussion needed? They all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the EDC part carries. So now, as we've kinda jumped ahead, we're on eight point one, which it was just the general discussion for the Rotary Park improvements. I think we've already kinda had the discussion, so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, for y'all. Now that you have twelve thousand nine hundred from the EDC, and you have twenty thousand dollars of your own money, that should complete phase two. But building the cover and the new mulch, minus, I think it came out to, I might check it. Thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars with the EDC, plus the twenty thousand that y'all fundraised, are we gonna go ahead, head and move forward even without the city's initial funding, and maybe see what we can do with the initial, the rest of the fifteen thousand dollars?
You can, you, you really need to, yeah. It's just so that the public can hear, you have to remember, the public is also.
So, we've got, so Rotary Club has already put out, so the twenty thousand includes, we've already spent money to have the steel, so if you go out to the park, behind the park, the steel is sitting there, but we're trying to get the money to, to offset so we can do the labor side and, and get everything of the phase completed.
So the steel is not incorporated into twenty-nine thousand for the weather cover?
Well, so our, I'm talking about our budget, the, what we have, the twenty from Rotary, we've got money allotted that's already in the steel. So I wouldn't add the twenty.
Twenty-nine, it's less than twenty-nine now, because you've already purchased the steel.
Yes. So, so our commitment is already in the steel, we just haven't constructed.
That makes sense.
Does that make, does that make sense? I don't know if that, I don't, again, I don't have the exact figures on how much steel and everything, cause we made a deal with the contractor, that is, because it's going back for the city, they're willing to kinda offset the scheduling a little bit.
I guess, I don't know, I don't know if you're gonna be able to answer my question, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer, ask correctly, so, thank you.
I was gonna say, I think we need, we need, when we talk about this, we need more information from their financial person, so that we.
Right, so right now, this was just a discussion item, so if y'all could come back and bring us, like, and tell us how much y'all are gonna put, you know, put awarded, give us a little more concrete.
Tell it, what was the steel cost? What, what part of the steel?
Twenty-five dollars we needed to break it.
Yeah. I mean, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I'm just gonna give it to you.
And then we can do it at that point as an action item, one way or the other, and then then we'll have more information. So.
All of it.
No, go ahead, you're good.
So part of the discussion is us asking for approval, can we build the park there? Because it's not.
Or the, yeah.
The cover. Yeah, that cover part, cause we don't, we need approval to be able to put the park there pending, I mean, the cover, sorry.
No, we didn't, so.
It has to be on the agenda before we can make action on it, because everything has to be posted before we can vote on that.
Oh, I added that, I thought, yeah, I thought that was added into the thing.
Okay, cause they just have it as a discussion item.
Okay.
And not an action.
Okay.
So Holly, I mean, I hate making y'all wait another month before the next meeting. No, I know that. Right now, we will say it'll go in the next meeting.
And we, we're not opposed to putting the cover there, so that's not going to be an issue.
Okay, well, see, that's, I guess that's where the assumption was, that it, cause that's the consensus we got, was it'll be okay, so I guess we just assumed it would kinda just, but we can make it a separate action item.
Yeah, so it just has to be, for us to be allowed to vote on it, it has to be posted so many days before our meeting?
Okay.
Seventy-two hours before the meeting, that's an action item, so that the city knows that, that the community knows, know we're voting on, and that we're voting on to.
Okay.
Because on here, it's just as a discussion.
Okay.
So if it's a discussion and action, we would be able to take action.
Okay.
So we, we just have to go by bylaws really, I mean, that's really.
Right, okay. I thought that was it, that's, that was just a misunderstanding on the.
Make sure that that is an action item.
Yeah, we'll make sure next time, and then Holly, make sure, if y'all make sure it gets on the agenda next time as an action item. And then if we have questions, and if y'all can get that together, and then just let us know, then we can go, we can move forward.
Okay.
Also, if you can see what it is exactly, what you need, not a ballpark number, like.
Right.
We, we can justify exact numbers a lot better than we can justify, oh, twenty thousand on the cover, well, if it only costs sixteen thousand, or eighteen, give us four thousand back, how's that gonna work? So if they can get us that information too, before the next meeting, that could possibly be an action item, not just a discussion item, as long as it's posted that's seventy-two hours before our meeting, and we kinda have that information beforehand, we could move that process up as well, make that an action item also.
Do y'all know?
Like, an action for the funds that show up.
Do you know when you're gonna hear back either yes or no from?
I don't, they're, we're just kinda, we just send in the application, so.
Okay.
We'll make sure that gets something.
Okay, so do I need to do the, the eight days before and something else?
Just, as eight days before is fine, yeah.
Perfect, we'll make sure it's clear.
Yeah. And we apologize, it wasn't thrown out as an action item, I mean, but because it says just general discussion, we, we just can't, we, by law, we just can't do it. So, if there's, I don't, see, that was the last thing that I see, the next regular city council meeting is gonna be on March the eleventh, five thirty PM. If you wanna be on the agenda, please complete and return into City Hall, no delay, no delay. Noon, eight days prior. I don't think there's anything additional, so we'll call this meeting adjourned at six thirteen PM.
I'm very sorry, it's late.
Yeah.